Last name is Draper. Esha.
How you doing? John Zimmerman.
Michael.
Here.
Daniel Finales, Sports Secretary.
Danny, who else is supposed to be coming?
We have six yeses.
We have one more.
Okay, that's. And then we had two no answers.
Okay.
We have Rafael and we had Jeanette.
Okay.
No answer. And the other three, Kenny.
Okay, that's good. You had six, okay.
Which is twice the negative five.
Yeah, probably a hundred percent. How you doing? Want to start?
First application doesn't need exam anyway.
Okay.
Proceed and figure out work.
Okay. Good enough. Okay, we're going to call this meeting in order. City of New Brunswick, zoning board of adjustment meeting for Monday, September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. Roll call, please.
Let's see my meetings. Eric Merrill, Jeanette Torres. He's a busy old one. Ashaya Draper.
Here.
Barry Sherman.
Here.
Carla Castaneda.
Here.
Michael Valvin. Kristen Rich.
Here.
Rafael Madsenars. Mike Tublin.
Here.
John Zimmerman.
Sorry, John Zimmerman.
Put me in Cox's. Okay, Dan Public Announcement.
Please advise that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied. And that the annual notice, which case efficient notice at time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of the zoning board of the city of New Brunswick has to follow the city of Clark and place an appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall Seventy, Mary Street, New Jersey, and has to transmit its official newspaper to the city of New Brunswick, number one hundred and thirty, Starlight.
Thank you. Sue to the flag.
I would be pleased to fly the United States of America to the general public as a stand. For the nation of God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we have a resolution of memorialization, Dan.
Yes, here we have for one twenty-nine Easton Avenue, the Shell gas station. Eligible voting members who are here today are Barry Sherman, Carla Castaneda, Mike Tublin, and John Zimmerman.
A motion.
Second.
And a third, or a winner. Barry Sherman?
Yes.
Carla Castaneda?
Yes.
Mike Tublin?
Yes.
John Zimmerman. Yes.
All right.
Okay, we have an extension of time for one twenty-nine French Street?
Yes. Which isn't confusing or anything with one twenty-nine Easton Avenue.
Yeah.
This is, I think, the final extension. They're just trying to wrap up their outside agency approvals. That's it, everybody can vote on this one.
Okay.
What's the address?
One twenty-nine French Street. Did a motion to approve.
I think it's the corner of Harvey and French.
Forty-six, forty.
French.
Any motion?
Any motion?
Wait, who made who motion first? You did.
No.
Then do we have second?
Second.
Thank you. Ashaya Draper?
Yes.
Barry Sherman?
Yes.
Carla Castaneda?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Mike Tublin?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the first public hearing is Trillium I and M LLC, Thirteenth Stone Street, Block seventy-five, Lot seven, ZB two oh two three dash thirteen. The applicant was approved before the zoning board of adjustment meeting in July of twenty twenty four. The project consisted of demolishing the two and a half story, single-family home and replacing it with another two and a half story, two-family dwelling with four bedrooms in each unit that come before the board now to seek a relief from a condition of approval. Does anyone on the board have a conflict? Okay, seeing none.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. My name is John Luke. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Trillium I and M LLC. As the Chairman highlighted, this is an application for a leave of condition. The property is located at Thirteenth Stone Street. It's designated as Block seventy-five, Lot seven on the official tax maps for the city of New Brunswick. This relates to a resolution that was adopted by this board on July twenty-second of twenty twenty four. As the Chairman mentioned, the approval granted in that resolution was for CND variance relief to construct a two-family home where currently a single-family home exists. The neighboring property is eleven Stone Street, seventy-five, Block seventy-five, Lot five point oh one. Before that prior application and today, they've shared a common driveway along their boundary line. There was never any memorialization of an easement agreement, no shared maintenance agreement. So when the applicant previously came for the board seeking relief to construct a two-family home, the board wisely required that the applicant contact their neighbor and execute a cross-access easement and a shared maintenance agreement. Now, I'm not my unfortunately, my client could not make it tonight. He was supposed to be here and provide fact testimony, but admittedly, I was the individual who made most of the efforts to contact that neighboring property owner and their counsel to negotiate an agreement executed. And I, we provided with the application for tonight, a chronology of efforts, our contact efforts. It spans about twelve pages long and details emails, phone calls, letters, and even draft easement agreements that have been provided to the neighboring property owner. We've exhausted our efforts and to be completely transparent where they're ongoing. Because as I have advised my client, and I believe, I don't want to speak for the neighboring property owner or their counsel, but I do believe it is in everyone's best interest to have an easement and a shared maintenance agreement because inevitably, the property will be repaid. So quite honestly, regardless of the board's actions tonight, my client will continue to pursue that easement and that maintenance agreement. However, without that, with with that condition imposed as part of the approval, my client can't move forward with obtaining permits and actually constructing a two-family house. And we're hoping to have it constructed by now and move in and have a space rented out. That has been totally frustrated by our efforts to execute, draft, negotiate, and execute this agreement. So we're here tonight seeking relief of that condition. And I assure the board, we're going to continue to pursue the easement and shared maintenance acts, shared maintenance agreement, but just so that my client can move forward with construction, we're requesting relief.
Okay. That's that's all.
That's all. If you'd like to ask any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them.
Any member of the board, what professionals have a?
I'll just throw out that in my capacity as a planning director and whatnot, that I I spoke to the applicant at some point in the last year. Because this has been at least three or four times that I've spoken to them with their frustration about this. And at least one time, they called me and then miraculously, the property owner next door, for some other reason, within like a day or two, called me about something unrelated. And I tried to like bridge the two of them together and it just it just didn't happen. They gave me a phone number, I related to them. It sounds like it just nobody ever answered. And I, you know, it's been quite frustrating and I feel bad for the applicant in this case.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm not familiar with all of the up-to-date details of this one, but I I think it might be helpful for the board for you to take a look at the site plan or the, at least the survey in this situation. Because if I recall correctly, there's a shared driveway between two properties. I think there's about maybe two or three feet of driveway on this particular property. And then there's another ten or so feet on the neighbor's property we were discussing. So if you look at the site plan, there are two proposed rear yard parking spaces. And unless they get that easement, they have no way of getting to those parking spaces. On on their property alone, they only have about two or three feet.
So my understanding is though, is that they can and they do park there or have been able to. It just makes it ambiguous long-term about the stability of access. But there is probably an argument, and it becomes a legal argument, about whether or not there's some sort of like de facto easement or something later, but that's not for us to decide. But I do think that the that the applicant has made a good trade.
I I will I will note that the neighbor's parking is also located back there. So if they were to ever vacate that driveway or eliminate that driveway, they would eliminate their own access to parking. And I I assure you, we are continuing to pursue this even because as as you mentioned, it's in my client's interest to have that easement.
And the attorney for the the neighbor, you know, response to you?
It's not no response. I think he's frustrated as well. And he he's made very good faith efforts to negotiate with me. We, my my client will be a resident property owner. The owner of the neighboring property is it's Rutgers Council of AAUP chapter. So it's a professors you, I, so I don't know if that indicates what their motivation or interest is in protecting their property rights, but they definitely will.
And you've been using this property driveway up until this point?
As far as I know, there has never been a dispute about access. What the concern for the property owner, I think for the board, yes, to maintain the access, but also inevitably, it's going to have to be repaid. How does that shared maintenance work out? And I'm confident when we get this agreement, it'll be, there will not be any dispute or issue.
It's just stone driveway now?
I believe it's been asphalt.
It's there's asphalt. So who's in charge of plowing it when it gets?
That would that would that would be a part of the agreement, but as you mentioned, most of it.
Right now, who does?
Most of it is on on the other properties, so they do take care.
Okay.
And we agreed to cost share, but more moralism, moralize that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think the board's concerned with maintenance of the driveway because that's between you and the general property owners. I think the board's concerned is what happens if access to the parking spaces in the rear becomes on the other. You get into a dispute with your neighbor and the neighbor cuts off your access for whatever reason. I don't recall any application in twenty twenty-four, but I don't know how important those two spaces were to the grant of application.
Well, they were part of it because that's off-street parking is, especially in Stone Street. It's, you know, it's very limited on-street parking.
Slim.
That's right. He's stuck, he's on, he's stuck with the addition and then I'll say re-council.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Does he have any on-street portion of that?
It's, I mean, you get your your permit parking.
And do we require him to give us up first?
No, we didn't. I don't think we did because there's so little parking there to begin with. It would be unfair to have him give those up, you know?
I also do just want to reiterate, if anybody were to cut off access to that driveway, they're cutting off access to the parking on both properties. It wouldn't just impact my client, it would impact the the other properties.
Their parking could also. That would be a very efficient for them.
They could because ten feet, a car can go down ten feet, no?
It's like it's six feet on one property and four feet on the other property.
Okay.
I thought it just said ten and three.
Let's get precise. I I was just doing.
You're right, you're right. Four and six.
Just for a minute, if you've got a comment, just.
Because I think about yourself also.
Yeah, state his name, spell your last name for the record.
Frank Antisell, A N C I S E L L.
You swear front, so I will pretend I think that's the truth.
I did. It's possibly four feet on the property and six feet on the other property. So it's about two-thirds and one-third. So they they both need each other. Just the Teachers Association has, I think, six or seven spots in the perimeter building. So they actually need the driveway more than the applicant does.
Okay.
And just for history's sake, when they expanded their building or renovated their building, the board at that time did not require them to obtain cross-access easement from our from our company. So.
And the applicant, how's, how long has he had the property, sir?
I believe he purchased it, I think it was post-two thousand and twenty. I I don't know the exact.
Okay, any other member of the board have any questions for this? Okay, let me open up to the public. Any member of the public have any comment on on this application? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close that. Any other board discussion regarding this? I think the council did his due diligence in trying to get this resolved. So I don't see any issue with it personally. Yeah, all right, Dan, was there any conditions we need to break?
No, no, we're actually removing the condition.
We are removing, that's true.
Everything else stays the same.
Okay, very good, okay.
We have to vote.
Yes, we can take a motion, make a motion to approve this.
Yes, I'm sorry. Once you take a motion, the yes will be to approve removing that condition from the prior approval.
Right, exactly. Yes, that's, that sounds good, Jeremy, thank you. Okay, we're going to make a motion to remove the condition from this property.
I make that motion to remove the condition.
A second.
Ashaya Draper?
Yes.
Barry Sherman?
Yes.
Carla Castaneda?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Mike Tublin?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, now we'll proceed to BRG Morel LLC, fifty-six Morel Street, Block seventy-seven, Lot thirty point oh two, ZB two thousand and twenty-five dash ten. The applicant is seeking approval for a D four FAR variance preliminary and major, final major site plan and a C two bulk variance for deficient parking. Property is located in the R five A residential zone and is also situated in the College Avenue District overlay. The applicant would like to add a fourth floor addition on an existing three-story multifamily building, currently containing ten apartment units. The fourth floor addition will consist of five new residential units, increasing the total unit count to fifteen units. Peter Lamford, Esquire.
I know I look a little younger than Peter.
You were a little bit younger.
John's moved out of the law firm several shock again. You're going to be stuck with me all night. I am here on behalf of the applicant, BRG Morel LLC. As the Chairman noted, this property is located at fifty-six Morel Street, designated as Block seventy-seven, Lot thirty point oh two. It's currently developed with a three-story, ten-unit apartment building and it's lawfully operating at a maximum occupancy of fifty-two residents. It's situated on the south side of Morel Street, between Wyckoff Street and St. Arch Street. It's also in the R five A zoning district, which allows single and two families houses, but it's also in the College Avenue overlay district where low and mid-rise apartments are permitted. So the site, this is a site plan and variance application seeking all legal relief necessary to construct a fourth story on the existing three-story apartment building. It will, this fourth story addition will contain an additional five apartment units for a total of fifteen units in the building overall. The building footprint will remain completely unchanged. And the this, the relief we're seeking with this application is a D variance relief. That's D four deviation from the FAR standards, floor area ratio standards. The applicant is seeking further relief from deviations to the applicable bulk standards, as will be detailed by my expert witnesses. And those include minimum rear yard setback, required numbering parking spaces to be provided, minimum rear parking area buffer, and a maximum building coverage. So my my two witnesses tonight who I'll present are Susan Chefmaker, our architect, and Frank Antisell, our engineer and planner. Just for the sake of the record, I do want to note that a notice of this application has been provided in accordance with the MOUL and proofs of publication of conservative filings have been submitted to coordinate professionals. So unless there are any legal questions or housekeeping matters for the board to address, I would ask that my first witness, Susan Chefmaker, be sworn in as testimony.
Yes, and before you proceed, there's a housekeeping matter. Any member of the public have a conflict? Seeing none, may proceed.
Could you please swear your name?
Yeah, Dan, would you swear on this?
Sorry. Can you say your name, so you're asking for the record?
Susan Chefmaker, S H E F F M A K E R.
You swear from the top of all, is that the truth?
Yes, I do.
Susan?
Yes.
And the Chefmaker, you have appeared before this board before?
Yes.
So we'll accept you as an expert. Okay.
So I have, so Susan, I'm proposing a fourth floor, an existing three-story building. And I have two exhibits, the first being the sheets that I have submitted already, which is sheet A one and A two, which is on the other side, which will get two.
What's the provision date?
Six twenty-four, twenty-five.
And the, oh?
This does not have date on it. I can leave this if you all, if you want.
I mean, I guess I mean to ask, was that submitted as part of the application or is that what it's tonight? So let's call that A one, which is.
A one, A two, so maybe A three, since these are, A one is that going to be confused?
I think.
What's your preference?
I was about to say the same. Call a picture A one.
Okay. We'll call it.
Nice, sure.
So the existing three-story building is eighty foot wide by seventy foot deep. And we know that it's on a one-hundred by one-hundred foot lot. And that allows for a ten-foot front, ten on each side, and twenty foot on the rear. So the proposed building is going to maintain that exact footprint as fourth floor. The ground floor, which is on sheet A one, plans, the existing ground floor plan is on the left side, bottom of the page. That existing plan is going to substantially remain the same as it is now, which has a lobby, seating, elevator, it has a refuse room, manager's office, elevator, two stairs, and a bicycle rack room. So that's all remaining the same. The left side of the ground floor has a parking garage. And it currently has ten parking spaces. And what we're proposing is to re-proportion the parking spaces to install support columns to support the existing beams and carry the new fourth floor. Additionally, we're adding a garage overhead door at the rear of the parking garage to allow access to four new parking spaces at the rear of the building. So that brings our parking up to fourteen spaces. So the second and third floor plans, as we have said, it has currently ten total apartments and accommodates a total of fifty-two occupants. And the fourth floor is going to propose an additional five apartments. So those five apartments are very similar to the floors below, with the exception of modifications have been made to the plan to accommodate the new ADA apartments, making the new effect since this was originally submitted for the original construction. So in addition to being a duplicate floor, if we were to match the floors below precisely, we would have had the potential for twenty-six occupants at the fourth floor, which is the same as what's on the two floors below. However, we have made the front center apartment to be a three-person occupancy rather than a four, to make it a little more comfortable. Additionally, we agreed through the tac meetings to restrict the total building occupancy to seventy-five. So rather than having seventy-eight, have we duplicated a floor, we're proposing seventy-five for max total building. So now we move to the second page. This is the elevations. So the sheet A two, elevations. We are moving the top portion of the building. So I'm now pointing at the bottom right of the page, the front elevation. So the same design is what's now, if you look at the other board, the public board, the second floor or the third floor, the second level apartments is getting moved up ten feet, exactly how it is, inserting a floor in between. And what we're doing with the top floor is changing the siding color slightly to make the top level lighter gray. So that'll lighten it up, have it not seem quite so heavy. And it will add a little accent to not have it be so solid color all the way up. And it's going to be ship-lap siding, light gray. So the horizontal bands that are currently between the floors, which you see on the photo board, that same horizontal band will get added at the front of some to continue the aesthetic of it. And then if you look at the bottom left elevation, which is the rear elevation, you can see the new garage door at the back. And then the single swing door that was for over has gotten moved over to be able to access the parking area and not open into one of the cars. So in summary, the proposed addition is going to maintain the existing building footprint. And it's going to be maybe forty-five feet tall, complying. We're adding four parking spaces at the rear to help offset some of the added apartments. And everything's been updated for the new ADA codes and the total occupancy will be limited at seventy-five. And that solves that.
Okay, any member of the board or professionals have any questions for this witness?
I have a clarifying question. The floor separator aesthetic is not continuing in the back?
No, it doesn't continue now. So it starts at the at the sides.
Okay. Sorry, it's just confusing looking at the picture of it, but then knowing that there's actually an inserted floor in the picture. Like, picture behind you?
Yeah.
Because that's not accurate.
That's an actual photo.
You just wanted it to be that, that's the actual.
This is the existing.
Oh, I thought that was a mock-up of it.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a photo of exactly what it is right now.
Okay. I thought it was a pro. I thought it was a mock-up. I thought it was a mock-up.
It's like.
There's the existing, um, building have sprinklers system?
It does.
And they'll be putting one on the fourth floor?
The elevator will be extended, the sprinklers will be extended, all the plumbing and gas and.
And how many square feet is each floor?
Seventy by eighty is the outside.
How many parking spaces are you deficient? I know you're adding four, but what's the total you technically need for this project?
I think we'll get to that with Frank.
Frank will do that, okay.
There's thirty-four.
Okay.
I don't know if that's accurate.
Okay, we'll go to check that. Any other questions, board members, professionals? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Ms. Chefmaker. You can call your next witness.
My next witness is Mr. Frank Anticel. He's our engineer, expert as well as our professional planner, and he's a ready-to-use one.
Mr. Anticel, you've been here before, so we'll accept you as the next expert witness.
Yes, thank you.
I have a colorized version of sheet A three.
It's from the site plan?
It's the site plan, but also, what I did was, when I colorized, it was relatively small, so to make it a little bit easier, I didn't want to colorize the portions.
Because of, on a section together of the site plan?
To make it easier for all of us to see it. As we were talking about before, the site is located on Morel Avenue, Morel Street, which is one block off of the Rutgers College Avenue campus. The site is a hundred by a hundred. We have a access driveway which comes into, there's ten parking spaces that exist in the parking garage structure. We are taking and putting a door in the back of the building to have access to four additional spaces, and again, as you can see from here, there is a door in the front of the parking structure, and we're putting doors in the back. This way, the ten spaces inside the site are secured, the four additional ones outside are going to be in the back door, but they're not going to be secured. But we want to keep, keep it so that the building itself is secure. The only, as you can see here, everything that's on the site exists, the only thing that we're adding is the parking spaces in the rear, and that was a result of the TAC meeting that we had, the different TAC meetings that we had with your staff. When we're looking at parking, thirty-four parking spaces are required, fourteen visible parking spaces are proposed, and we also have three EV parking spaces, which gives us a credit, so we're, theoretically, we have seventeen parking spaces with thirty-four required.
Can I, I'm going to interject real quick, just for the sake of everybody's information. So, the zoning board might not be aware of this because it's former planning board, City Council thing, but we somewhat recently adopted a master plan reexamination report, and there were recommendations in there, and one of them was to convert the overlay that they're operating under into a conditional use, and in the conditional use, the parking requirement is calculated differently than this application, so it's one for every four people of max occupancy, persons of max occupancy, which would be a parking requirement of nineteen, so just stepwise, so under that criteria, you'd be too short.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if that was adopted yet.
I mean, it is, it's not, it's, your application's not under it because you, time of application, blah, 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 but just, I wanted everybody to know so that it's out there.
So, in future, if he was coming six months ago?
No, no, if he had applied today, instead of three months ago.
Okay. We would only, we would require to have nineteen parking spaces and thirty-four.
I, I will just note, under the municipal land use law, the time of the application rule, applicants are not held to newly adopted zoning standards, but they can avail themselves of those standards if they're beneficial to the applicant. So, obviously, we would request to avail ourselves of that nineteen requirement, seeking a varianceable or deviationable.
I have to agree, as long as we can confirm that that nineteen was adopted by the council, and is it effective that, and?
Yes.
Just a minute. Is that, that the council did adopt that change?
Back in July.
So, it is, it is effective in this zone?
Yes.
Okay, so what the council is saying, and I'm agreeing with him, is that because that's actually a benefit to the applicant, he is allowed to make advantage of that location, so the variance that he's requesting is seventeen spaces where nineteen are required, not where thirty-four are required, so that we're all saying the same book?
Sounds right. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Anticel, you can proceed.
So, as far as engineering testimony goes, that was the main part of my engineering testimony, and if the board doesn't have any engineering questions, I give it to the planning testimony portion of it.
Remember, have any more questions, professional?
Just one. I mean, the drainage from all this, like, it's going, is it going to go into the building? Like, are all doors going to go through the building to get out of that?
We're going to probably put a drywall in to handle the flow of water from the increase of the infurbing in the back here.
Okay, so we have, just a plan.
Yes.
Like that, okay.
Are you proposing any e-bike charging stations at all?
No, not at Morel.
Okay.
We do have the e-bicycle rack inside the building, but that's for regular bicycles charging.
Right, I would request you wouldn't charge bikes in the, in the lobby.
Mm-hmm. I, I don't think the applicant intention is to do that.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay, you can proceed with your planning testimony then.
Sure, and Mr. Dominguez stole a part of my thunder because with the new master plan, right now, we noticed for a floor ratio variance, because we're proposing a far of, our far that we're proposing is on here.
I saw two point two four.
Two point two four. The new ordinance that the township adopted in the overlay zone allows a far of two point four, so we are actually under on the floor ratio when you look at the conditional uses. And when you look at the other conditional uses, the other parts of the conditional use, it says, it wants the minimum lottery ten thousand square feet in the overlay zone, per the master plan, which we are at ten thousand square feet. It wants a maximum building coverage of sixty percent. It wants a maximum purpose coverage of eighty percent. It wants an existing old setbacks similar to the R five A zone, which is where we are, with an increase of the ten-foot side yard setback and combined of twenty, which we're ten and ten, so we have a combined of twenty, so we meet the setbacks, and it allows for a maximum building height of four stories and forty-eight feet. We're proposing a four-story, and we're at forty-five feet, so we're under on that, and again, it allows the far of two point four to one, so we're actually under on our floor ratio. So, if, if Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Dominguez agree, based on that, I don't believe we actually need a floor ratio of that.
I mean, I would agree.
That was part of the change in July.
July. So, if the only variance you need is rear yard?
The only variance we need is park.
Parking?
Too short on two parking spaces.
Too short on two parking, I thought you said.
Yes.
Because rear yard, rear yard is now required to be twenty?
The rear yard is required to be twenty, and a yard is twenty.
Yeah, and then building coverage is at sixty, and you're at fifty-six.
Yep.
And then far, you're at two point two four, and it's now two point four?
Yep.
So, it's parking.
Yep, so it's two parking spaces.
Is it two or nineteen, and you're providing fourteen?
Well, we're providing.
Seventeen.
We're providing fourteen, but we get the three credits for the EV space.
Correct.
Do you get the three credits when your new standard is seventeen?
I believe we're still entitled to the three credits for the EV.
Standard's not thirty-four anymore, it's nineteen. You can't use this.
It's ten percent of the last.
Oh, yeah, ten, ten count of all ways, so you're.
Wayne, you are right.
Sue, it's one point seven, should be.
So, so.
So, we're, the park comparison is correct. You're at sixteen versus the nineteen requirement. Yeah, eighteen-three.
Yep, and you are, we're, that's a lot.
I'm going to write this down.
Just be a fun resolution.
Right. Okay.
So, is there any testimony about, like, the parking and access to public transportation?
Well, yeah, as far as the parking goes, we are one block away from the school. Currently, the applicant rents out the parking spaces to the, to the applicant, to the occupants of the building, and in the two years that he's had the building, he hasn't rented out a hundred percent of the ten spaces that he has existing. So, there really, it hasn't been much demand for the parking, and you are right across the street from Rutgers, you have the Rutgers busing, and you have all the, you know, you're in walking distance of the campus.
So, under the current, it could assume those, he has ten parking spaces, and I assume there's some variance at that point, how many did he need, they need at that point?
That, on the previous one.
Two thirds of thirty-four, right? So, it'd be two thirds of thirty-four.
It must've been like twenty-two, twenty-three spaces, and they had ten?
So, they had a.
They could get one.
We had a larger parking variance prior.
Okay.
Do you have any street parking permits?
We gave them up as part of this application.
The, the previous approval?
The previous approval we gave of their on-street permit for.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Anyone else have any questions? All right, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Anticel. Let me see if I have any public comment, any member of the public have any comment on this application? All right, seeing none, we'll close that. Any board discussion about this? Seems kind of cut and dried now that the new standards have taken place. All right, Dan, do you want to read some conditions?
Sure. Should the board act favorably, the following conditions shall apply. Blinds in terms of French and Bariloche Associates' report dated August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, submission of all necessary easements, easements and or cross-access agreements for review and approval by the board attorney and city engineer prior to filing the same, payment of a site performance bond in amount to be reviewed and approved by the city engineer, submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in amount calculated pursuant to Title sixteen point two four point one six zero, payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles thirteen point oh four and thirteen point oh eight, issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required, compliance of terms of Big Bell Planning Report dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post-fover reviews, payment of any other fees due to the city of New Brunswick related to development or use of this project, payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees, Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver, DNR and Alpha Mission approval or waiver, Frehholdt Soa Conservation District approval or waiver, submit engineering site line that can comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering members or plan amendments offered at the hearing, submit architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering members or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Do we, do we, excuse me, I'm sorry, do we remember if we did a Title Thirty-nine for this one when it was first approved and built?
I, I, I don't know. But if it's a, if it's a condition.
Well, it's a condition, then, I just don't know if we did it. If, we'll say, condition, execution of a Title Thirty-nine parking portion agreement, if one already exists, then, okay, we'll, we'll consider it checked off when we get there. Special condition for maximum occupancy of seventy-five persons for the whole building, all utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant as their sole expense, all onsite utilities to be constructed underground, all temporary approaches since of the public right-of-way shall require city council approval, all construction staging shall be done onsite unless an approachment allowing to the public right-of-ways approved by city council, streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris, applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works, traffic pads shall be installed at all construction exits, replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks as per direction of city engineer, schedule pre-construction meeting with city engineering department, and I guess we're just left with the variance department, right? So, it's the one variance that's a lot, right? Okay.
So, is it a pileup thing for the three spaces?
No, I have to check, but I'm pretty sure that they are under the pileup cutoff.
Gotcha.
Well, we will visit that and do that math at the end.
Okay.
So, the variance requested is provide sixteen spaces where nineteen are required?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
Yeah. You got a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
Shaya Draper?
Yes.
Mary Sherman?
Yes.
Christian Rich?
Yes.
Lachabla?
Yes.
John Denver?
Yes.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll move on to the third application. Reshaba Investments LLC, fifty-two Simplex Avenue, block five oh three, lot fifteen, ZB twenty twenty-five dash oh eight. The applicant is proposing to make the project site, which is currently vacant land, a two-story single-family dwelling. The project address is located in the R five C zoning district.
Good evening, Chairman and board members. Once again, I am John Denver, the Law Firm Savo Shaba. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Reshaba Investments LLC. The property is fifty-two Simplex Avenue, which is designated as block five oh three, lot fifteen. It is an undeveloped lot, it was previously part of a set of row homes that burned down. This is, this is a corner lot that's situated on the western corner of the intersection of Simplex and Lake. It is in the R five C zoning district where single and two-family residential homes are permitted, and we are seeking a D variance for FAR, we are seeking C variances for parking, lot area, lot width, front yard setback, one side yard, in order to build a three-bedroom single-family home with a maximum occupancy of four people. The first floor will contain a living room, kitchen, and a half-bath, and one bedroom, and the second floor is going to contain two bedrooms and a full bathroom. That will be described in more detail by our architect. There's no other habitable living space proposed, there are two parking spaces proposed, and that complies with the code requirement. As I mentioned, this application does necessitate a D variance Relief from the FAR standards for single-family home in the R five C zone. The applicant seeks further relief from deviations from the bulk standards, as will be detailed by my expert witnesses. And the property is now concluded in flood lanes, and the structure will have sprinklers or fire suppression, so my witnesses tonight will be William Doran, our architect, Daniel Doran, our engineer, and Frank Anticel, our professional planner. Notice of this application has been provided as required by the MOUL, and proofs of publication of conservative dwellings were provided to the board professionals. So, unless the board has any questions for me or housekeeping matters.
Yes, any member of the board have any conflict with this? Okay, seeing none.
I will note, if the board is inclined to eliminate half the relief we're seeking in this application, we can send to that.
Sure.
So, Mr. William Doran?
You swear? Can you say your name, start your last name for the record?
William Doran, D O R A N.
You swear from the top of your head about the truth?
Yes.
You've heard it before.
Very good, thank you, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. This should be pretty quick, I hope. As our attorney outworn, we're building a single-family home there on this lot. It's, it's a very narrow, long and narrow lot, so the house is long and narrow, the lot is other size, so it dictates the, the style and type of house that we put there. This, the, the entire house is just under a thousand square feet. We have living room, dining room, kitchen, powder room on the first floor, bedroom on the first floor, and then two bedrooms and a bathroom on the second floor. All of the room sizes, the bedrooms, and the public spaces will be according to ordinance and will have the proper amounts for footage that's required. The exterior of the building will be party plank on both Simplex and Lake. Basically, because it's on the corner, we have two front yards. Basically, because it's on the corner, we have two, uh, front yards, fronts to the building, so we'll treat that as such. Uh, my client told me I got a little aggressive with the black windows, and he may not do those, but, uh, otherwise, we're going to have the, uh, a light gray party plank with a contrasting trim, uh, white trim, probably white trim around the windows. Uh, we used a party plank, wooden batten siding in the gable facing Simplex. Uh, Mr. Dominguez, in his review letter, uh, stated that we've only got the one entrance here. It's a little strange. Uh, typically, we'd like to get some access to the backyard, but the, uh, that's a bedroom in the back on that first floor. So we could put a door out there, we have the room, uh, we can put a little, uh, little platform and steps going, uh, out to the backyard. I could also do it on the side yard off of Lake, uh, with, with a door here instead of a window. Uh, it might make most, more sense to go out, well, probably with the side and not go through the bedroom. If you think we need it.
How would people get to the backyard?
If we don't put anything, you'd go out the front door.
Is there enough room to walk?
It's a pretty small footprint. It's a small footprint.
Is there a walkway?
Uh, well, you could.
It's, it's, it's a very narrow.
You could walk on the grass or you could walk on the sidewalk.
Cause they can't put a fence.
I'm sorry?
They wouldn't be able to put a fence for the back. I'm just trying to imagine the person getting to the backyard.
Well, if you wanted to barbecue in your backyard, you're, the way it's designed right now, you'd be going out the front door. If we put one in the back, we'd be going through, uh, a bedroom, which isn't ideal. I could, as, and as I said before, we could put a door on the side, but the front door's here and the, the side door would be there, so.
He's proposing a three-foot setback on the side, right? That would.
Uh, I think there is room there, there's room there for the, uh, for the platform to sit down for.
Anything else need to point out?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure before we start asking questions.
Oh, sorry.
You're still in the middle of your testimony.
Sorry.
Okay.
I have a question. Uh, are those PTEC units or is that a?
Yes, PTEC units.
So no PTEC for the property?
Correct.
We can continue asking questions then if you have any. Legally, they need to put two egresses in, fire safety codes.
I mean, that's not a zoning bill.
No, no.
So, I mean, I think that the egresses, I think the windows presumably they open up and so you could get out, hop out the window in case of fire that meets the criteria.
So probably building could have sample.
No, okay, all right. Okay.
And where's, where's that room again?
I'm sorry. There's a bedroom on the, uh, first floor in the rear.
And then had the egress windows.
So here, here's, um, Simplex and here's Lake.
Right.
Uh, there's a bedroom in the back corner with the egress, it's got two egress windows. And then upstairs, uh, a bedroom in the front and a bedroom in the back, both with, uh, well, the front window, the front room actually has four windows, the back bedroom has two windows.
The full, we full egress combined, yeah.
What is the lot size, uh, right now?
Uh, it's a, a little over eighteen hundred for a key.
I mean, width and length? The fifty by a hundred, is it?
Well, it's, it's, sorry, you, you, you talk, you're dedicated.
I don't know.
Uh, it, it's, I'll, I'll cover this. So it's got a peak of twenty-four point eight-five feet on Simplex.
Okay, I see under proposed, okay.
And then it's ninety-three point three-two feet at the back, but it's irregularly shaped, it has like a taper. It's not like a box, it's not a rectangle, uh, parcel, it's more of a, a very stretched out trap.
So how much room do you have in the backyard? I mean, if it's two feet and it's.
No, uh, there's, uh, there's, Dan can probably, we'll, we'll, we'll address.
Okay.
Let's, let, I think there's enough room to get a barbecue, a little bit of space back there.
Okay.
It's not a couple of feet, otherwise you would have.
I got you.
I would have brought that.
Yeah, okay. All right, fine, you can call your next witness.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
You say your name, start your last name for the record?
Daniel Doran, D O R A N.
You swear from the top of the head and tell nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Doran, you've been here before, many times. Well, certainly an expert.
I have one exhibit. All that it is is a large version of the variance schedule submitted with the application. Just to orient yourself, Simplex Avenue is on the top of the page, Lake Street is on the left side, and the site itself sits right at that southeast of the intersection of those two roads. Now, as I stated, the site is technically known as Block five oh-three, Lot fifteen. It's irregular in shape, it's a small lot, undeveloped lot, that has, I'll say, accumulated a lot of debris over the years, and I think it'll be very, very good to see the site developed and cleaned up. The site has twenty-six point two-three feet along, uh, S- Simplex Avenue. It has ninety-five point twenty-four feet on the front edge of Lake Street. And then it narrows down to about twelve point six feet on the southerly boundary. The application or the, uh, the dwelling that's being proposed is a two-story, single-family dwelling. It is located ten point four feet off of Simplex, five point two feet off of Lake Street, and three feet off its easterly boundary. The front door of the house will be facing Simplex. The dwelling itself will be serviced by municipal water and sanitary sewer. In the rear of the dwelling will be a five-by-six concrete pad. That pad is for the storage of, uh, trash containers, both recyclable and domestic trash. There'll be a six-foot-high vinyl stockade fence along the westernly side of that pad that will be able to screen the containers from Lake Street. Beyond that, in the rear of the property, there are two parking spots. Those parking spots are slightly smaller than what is required. Uh, the required spaces are nine by eighteen. These spaces will be eight by fifteen. So yes, a large vehicle, a, a big SUV or a big, um, pickup truck would most likely not be able to utilize those spaces, but the, it's anticipated that the individuals occupying the building will have our normal cars, which will have no problem at all fitting into those spaces. The site's not designated as a major stormwater development, but they do have to meet the stormwater requirements of the city, and there will be a drywall installed at the southerly end of the site. The roof levers will be collected and picked into that drywall. As far as, uh, on-site landscaping is concerned, there'll be one flowering deciduous tree and four flowering evergreen shrubs. That meets the city requirements for landscaping. And there will be three streeters, two on Lake Street and one on Simplex Avenue. The applicant is also proposing to install sidewalk and curving along the front of Simplex Avenue. There's an existing handicap ramp located at that intersection that will be removed and replaced with a ramp that meets AD standards. A concrete, um, apron will be created and installed along with the press curve that will provide access from Lake Street to the two parking spaces. There'll also be a pedestrian walkway installed from the east side of Lake to the west side. The west side improvement is a six-foot-high vinyl stockade fence along the easterly boundary of the site. We are in receipt of the planning memo dated eight twenty-four of this year, engineering memo dated eight twelve of this year. We will have no problem in providing you the information that is currently shown on the plan or provided through our testimony.
Okay, thank you. Any member of the board or professionals have any?
Well, I have a question because I, I brought it up and I guess it never went anywhere. Why, why can't we move the house over a little bit to get a better side yard setback, compliant side yard setback on, uh, the adjoining property? Move, you know, slide the house over to Lake Street two feet, uh, where we already have a, you know, non-conforming front yard setback, but it's less important probably than the front on Simplex. And then you can leave more room for when, hopefully, this kicks off, uh, you know, the natural redevelopment of those row house lots getting developed, that you'll have a compliance to that yard for your neighbors.
We thought that it would be advantageous to have a house at, at least five feet off of the property line, and we, you know, as a result of the configuration of the lot that narrows down as it goes to the south, the configuration of the dwelling, and then maintaining that five feet, that's all that we were left with, that these two corners of the house was the three. Uh, will, will anybody really, I'll say, notice the difference between the three feet and the five feet along that easterly property line? I'd like to think not, and I would hope to think that with the six-foot vinyl fence that we're installing, we at least mitigate that, uh, three-foot side yard.
Can I just clarify, were, were you suggesting a zero setback on one of those sides?
I'm suggesting moving the house two feet closer to Lake or whatever amount is necessary. I'm guessing about two feet to get five foot all along this side. Well, five foot at the, at the corners where it meets the, the closest points.
Someone could walk into the backyard.
I mean, not necessarily. Oh, you mean from the, the house? I mean, they, they have to get on the street and go on the sidewalk anyway, probably, or walk for the grass.
Yeah.
So that's.
It's so that they're not going to be as close to the future neighbors.
That's, I just, I just think that, you know, you have two front yards, so I feel like it's up to the board ultimately, but my opinion as planner is that if you have two front yards and given the context of the neighborhood, it's probably okay to sacrifice one of them to accommodate the side yard of future neighbors on your other side, since you already comply with one. But that's, I mean, I don't think it's like, I'm not pressing that from like a perspective of, uh, it's critical, but I think it's a good idea.
Can we, just to add to the record, can we place, what would the, now, do you need is, uh, I guess it would be front yard.
It would go down to three point two?
Three point two. It would become three point two under this alternative proposal. So if the board was inclined to, uh, impose that alternative, uh, then it would be a three point two setback from, from like, three point two would setback.
Correct. I think if the board is true that the, the joint side on the east is undeveloped also.
Well, it doesn't mean it's always going to be undeveloped.
I agree with Art, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, would you be amenable to if we make that a condition of the approval to, uh, slide that over?
Yeah.
Is it double?
Of course.
Okay. All right, that sounds fair. Thank you. Any other pro, uh, questions from the board, board members? How, uh, how big is the backyard anyway? I didn't, I didn't figure that out myself.
It looks to be about, uh, at its shortest width at the southerly boundary, that's twelve and a half feet.
Okay.
And we probably have, from the edge of the parking to the back, uh, property line, looks to be somewhere around fourteen feet.
All right, so there's a little room back there for.
How big is it on that?
Ten.
Pen.
We're talking for your bed, it's five by six.
Five by six, twenty-one, thirty-seven.
So, okay.
What do you guys think, surrounding properties, or the uses, sorry? Sure, so it's a really existing residential dwelling, and from here to the next intersecting street, I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head, but it's all vacant ground.
Okay. All right, any other questions for this?
I have one more thing. Um, sorry, uh, permanent parking.
Well, we would consent to waive that petition.
All right.
Is there permanent parking?
I don't remember, did I remember?
I, yeah, it might be, but I don't.
But in case in the future it comes to permanent parking, we can cover that.
To waive that, okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Was there any effort to get, or to buy, Jason, property?
There was, there, there was, I don't have the exact numbers that were proposed back and forth, but there was an effort, it did not, uh, prove for.
Okay. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Um, any member of the public, oh, sorry, do, do we have one more witness?
We do, one more.
I'm sorry, that's all, yep.
Mr. Frank Rantisso.
Mr. Frank, we'll accept you as an expert again.
All right, just warning.
Um, as the board has heard, this is a regular-shaped lot, and it's on the southeast corner of Simplex and Lake. And when you look at the bulk variances, if, with us moving the house closer to the lake, we would make the one bulk variance for side yard. The side yard is, that's required, is five feet, and now five feet is proposed. So we're now the three bulk variances. The first bulk variance is from minimum lay area, twenty-seven hundred square feet is required, eighteen hun, one thousand eight hundred and fifteen point seven-two square feet is what's existing in that, uh, block width, thirty feet is required, twenty-eight point eight-five is existing. And then front yard setback, we, a ten feet required, we need the ten feet on Simplex, and, but since it's a corner lot, we do not need the setback on Lake, which is three point two. Um, so these are C variances, and we believe that they can be granted under the C one hardship as this is a corner lot. Um, and in our case, it's an undersized corner lot, no matter where we place the structure, it's going to be over the setbacks. And so the best way, best thing you have to do is look at how can you minimize the impact to the surrounding properties. And I actually agree with Mr. Dominguez, um, coming five feet off that side property line is a good idea. The reason why these, this row houses is vacant is, and is a vacant, uh, area, is they're all burnt down. So with us having five feet from our adjoining neighbor, the chances of if our house were ever catch on fire, if our, down the house next door, it at least have some space in between instead of a common wall. Um, and we also have a small four variance where we have zero point five four is, is what's proposed, and zero point five oh is allowed, so we're over by four hundredths of, um, on the car. Um, when you look at special reasons for granting the variances, uh, we believe that these under the listful land use law, that there are several special reasons that apply here. Uh, special reason A promotes the general welfare, and in this case, we're constructing a new, modern, single-family dwelling that replaces, uh, row homes that burned down. Um, we believe the new house, um, situated where it is will be a better, will be better than the row houses that were there, and this is also much better than the vacant lots that are out there. Um, special reason C, promotion of, of appropriate population densities with construction of the single-family house, we're helping fill the need for housing in the area. Uh, special reason G, we're providing sufficient space in video areas, uh, where this is a residential use, which is single-family, and we're proposing a single-family house. Um, and then when you look at the master plan report, um, in all residential areas, uh, the ordinance should be more lenient to permit, it actually suggests that the ordinance should be more lenient to permit the reconstructing, uh, reconstruction of pre-existing, non-conforming single-family or two-family residential dwellings that have been substantially destroyed by fire, tornado, flood, natural disaster, and/or similar accidentation. So your master plan report that was just adopted actually contemplates what we have here where the house was burnt down, and now we're looking to rebuild it on the same lot. Um, so therefore, we believe the site is specifically suited for this use and for the size house we're proposing. Um, we don't believe there's, um, any negative impacts to the zone ordinance or the zone plan, um, as the master plan review examination report suggests that rebuilding burnt-down houses is a good, um, item, good thing for the town. Um, the negative criteria are met as a project that's consistent with the surrounding uses in the area and does not impair the zone plan, and there's no detriment to the neighborhood, and the site is suitable for the project.
So that concludes our presentation. I just want to leave you off with the relief we are seeking. Are seeking that de minimis, uh, FAR variance, as, as Mr. Rantisso pointed out, it's only four hundredths over the standard, and your master plan, uh, does provide that you should, uh, have a leniency where there's been a destroyed property that's now being rebuilt in accordance with the zone. Obviously, we're making a concession where we agree, as Mr. Dominguez suggests, shifting shifting the building footprint closer to Lake Street. That will provide a little bit more space between the neighboring property that is destructive. Obviously, we're seeking all the required setback variances. There's no possible improvement of this property that could be achieved without those setback variances. So that's what we're seeking tonight, and we hope you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Mr. Hansel leaves, there's a question the city brought up about the architectural plans that don't have the, you didn't label the sizes of each of the rooms.
That was like an issue during PAC and the plans I reviewed. And it almost looked like the, at this point, it, it's less of an issue for the actual.
Okay.
Application. It's just more of a note for futures to include them when submitting plans.
Okay.
Maybe she do have a plan.
You do have it now.
It's, it's been added to the plan.
Okay, good.
Okay, fine. Any member of the board have any questions? Okay. All right, seeing none. Thank you. All right. Um, have any board discussion on this matter? Everybody on board?
Could I just add one comment?
Yes, sure.
I do like, for parking, that it said, uh, the requirements for the length of car should be listed to the tenants. I think that would be really important. So I really like that that was included as well. I just wanted to toss that out there.
Yeah, the lots, the parking spaces now are eight by fifteen. So if they know that.
And if that's opposed as a condition of approval, we're happy to abide by that.
We need to make that a condition of approval?
What specifically are we?
So we are gonna, we're gonna.
Notify any prospective tenants.
The tenants that the size of the lot, of the parking space.
Sure, it should be, it should be probably required, well, in my opinion. It should be required as a, like a term or an item in the lease agreement.
In the lease.
That's easily complied, certainly.
Okay, fine.
And, um, we're also granting a waiver for the size of the parking spaces right now.
Yes. That, that, I would cover that.
That'll be a waiver, okay. All right. Any, open up to the public. Any member of the public have any comment on this application? All right, seeing none. Close set. Um, everything good on our end. All right, Dan, if you want to read some conditions.
Sure. All right. Should the board act favorably, the following conditions shall apply. Compliance with terms and conditions of Perillo Associates Engineering Report dated August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Submission of all necessary improvements under cross-access decrees reviewed and approved by the forward attorney and city engineer prior to filing the same. Payment of a sec performance bond in amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Submission of a site inspection as corporate engineering inspection fees in amount calculated pursuant to title sixteen point two four point one six zero. Water and sewer connection fees, payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to titles thirteen point oh four, thirteen point oh eight. Issuance of a road opening permit for the city engineer if required. Compliance with terms of city plan report dated August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Planning review as corporate for all anticipated, all anticipated post-pro review. Payment of any other fees due to city Nebraska-related development or use of this project. Payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. No substantial planning or approval or waiver. V and R can now commission approval or waiver. Free old soil conservation district approval or waiver. Submit engineering site plans that comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Submit architectural plans that comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Waiver of permit parking. Include in lease agreement this, uh, include in the lease agreement the size of the parking spaces. All utilities and other site improvements that have been maintained by the applicant at the show expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary encroachments into the public right-of-way shall require city council approval. All construction savings shall be done onsite unless an encroachment allowing it to the public right-of-way is approved by city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicants shall cause the streets to be cleaned. It is directed to do so by direct or public work. Tractor tasks shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks as per direction of city engineer. Schedule a reconstruction meeting with city engineering department. We have a variance for FAR. We have a variance for one of the front yard setbacks. No side yard setback variance anymore with the adjustment. Uh, lot size variance, lot width variance, and a design waiver for parking stall dimensions.
Okay. I have a motion. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Shai Grafer?
Yes.
Barry Sherman?
Yes.
Patrick Kanada?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Michael Talblin?
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other matters of interest to the public? Please come forward. Seeing none. Motion to adjourn.
All favor?
Hi.
Good night, everybody.